Okay, we call the meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, July 23rd, 2020, meeting of the Waldenborough Select Board, and we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would say at the outset that we're going to get a call in from our auditors at some point during the meeting, so when they call, we'll interrupt to listen to what he has to say and then come back to the regular flow of the meeting. We do have a public hearing regarding a bingo blanket letter that was presented by the American Legion. So is there a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. The hearing is open. Is there any, I guess we need to wait for public comment, Max?
There has been no police action or anything. They've had a clean record.
It's bingo.
It's bingo.
Yeah.
But it's been a very long time since we've done a hearing, so this will be a yearly event around this time, so.
Some of them older ladies and they get pretty rowdy.
Yeah.
I've been there when they.
Don't mess with the BMO crowd.
Any comments?
Is anybody on, Max?
Something might be going on with the stream. I don't know what, but it doesn't look like it's loading properly. I have to adjust this a bit. You can continue, but I.
You think we're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So there is no public comment. Is any comment from the Select Board other than those we've already made?
No.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Act on the bingo blanket letter. All in favor? Four to zero. Thank you. No presentations received. Well, the auditor will be making one at some point.
Correct.
Adjustments to the agenda.
I just have one.
You have one?
I just have one. I just, the pitch would like to use the fields for Dutch soccer camp, so we just need to discuss that real quick.
Okay. Sorry, who wishes to?
The pitch.
That's a.
It's a week-long soccer camp for kids.
Good.
So if we could just add that to the agenda, all you have to do is just, we've been through this once now, so we know the drill.
Under new business?
Yeah.
And that'll be 10.8?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah, Marcus gave it to me today.
10.6.
I've got two of my own, sorry. I'd like to add one to reappoint Scott Simpson to the planning board. His term is up at the end of this month. And I think they meet in July. Is it before the next?
Well, everybody's term has been extended to July 14.
To July 14? Okay.
So if you just want to do these all in one?
That's fine.
Or?
I don't have a problem with that.
Or we can, it doesn't matter.
I thought it would be good to get Scott put away and.
That's, we can.
That's fine. Is there any objection to putting him on? Okay, so he would be 10.6. And then there was another one we discussed during our AD Gray Subcommittee meeting last Friday? I think if there was.
Monday.
Monday? Okay, sorry.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Boy, my calendar. And the request was to broaden the mandate of that committee, that Subcommittee, to include consideration of new proposals and to create and distribute an RFP, subject to Select Board approval, if they think it would be something we should do. So that would be an additional agenda item.
Two items or one?
The one item would be Scott.
Right, right.
And the second item would be to extend the mandate of the committee to include consideration of new proposals and creation and distribution of an RFP if they would like to recommend that to the Select Board.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? And that was on, that's on the agenda then as 10.7. Okay, citizen comments. Do we have any, Max?
This is the Tuesday, July 23rd. No, there was an issue with the stream. I don't know why it wasn't going as smooth as it usually does, but I've had to restart the stream, so I'm going to have to mention everything you've already discussed just in the chat, and there'll probably be comments later, but this might have to be an issue. This might have to be an item to push a bit later on. I have the other recording though, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not live yet. So we can pick up the.
We can see, but more people are on watching, but it doesn't seem like we're live.
I'm trying to fix it all.
Okay.
So I'll wait a bit until you let me know it's okay.
Again, I'm going to try and fix it, but you might want to just move on, and we'll come back to citizens' comments, and I'll put it all in the chat.
Okay. Select Board comments? Katie, Abdon? Jen?
Yeah, I do. Hey, this is our time. Well, I think like most of us here, I like to learn things, learn new things. So I learned something new on Saturday while Katie and I were volunteering for the shellfish cleanup. I learned it from Katie. Katie learned it from Justin. So, and that's a wonderful way to learn, and maybe, maybe Abdon would be the one to explain it. It has to do with what looks like a float. And actually, it is a float, but it looks like the kind of float the kids jump off of down at the town landing. But it has another purpose in life. And it's like an incubator, right?
What's the name of, what do you call it?
It's an upweller.
Upweller. Upweller, okay.
Or it's.
So that's what that second float is?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the upweller.
I thought that was just there and, okay.
I did too, and then Katie checked on it and found out, and then she shared that with me, and now we're all in the know. So do you want to explain what an upweller is besides a clam incubator?
Well, all they do is, this one here is a little different than a normal upweller. Usually you'd put tiny baby clams in there and grow them to size where you think they could live. This here is going to be, we're going to put adult clams in there, and when they spawn out, there'll be a huge amount of clams in that float, and they'll all be close to each other, so they'll be able to, when they spawn, the males and females will be able to mix, so.
Okay. So you could think of another name for it.
No, she already has.
Oh, okay. All right. But an interesting thing, and what, you know, I thought was just a float. Really?
Does it float downstream, down river?
No. No, we're going to take it down. We're going to put it down river.
And then you anchor it off someplace?
Yep.
Okay.
So has it been stopped yet, or you're still?
We're waiting for a permit.
Yeah, the cages.
The permit from the Army Corps and cages.
Yep.
Now, it looks like a flat deck.
It does, it's supposed to.
Yep, there's individual hatches. Individual hatches you can, when you pull them up, go straight down through.
If you look at it, I mean, I looked at it and just saw a regular float.
Right.
But once Katie explained to me what it was, then I looked at it again, and I could see those little openings. So you know, sometimes our mind sees what we think it is, but it really isn't.
And how many doors are on top?
I think.
Nine, 10?
No, it's more than that. I think there's 20.
And they all open up?
Yep.
You put the clams in and shut it down?
Yep.
They all do their thing?
Yep, underwater.
Yep.
Be down.
And do they all know when they are just spawning?
Usually when it's water temperature related.
Just a joke.
When it's water temperature related.
Really?
And they all, when one goes, they all go.
Okay.
So you just go down on one spot, and they all do their thing, and then you bring it back up?
Nope, no, we'll leave it down there, because what we'll do is they'll spawn three, two or three times in the season.
Oh, they're like rabbits.
So.
So who built that?
Three harvesters.
Israel Harvey.
Yep.
Lee Bennett. Lee Bennett.
And Brian Bennett.
And Brian Bennett.
Yep. They did a really good job.
They did a beautiful job.
It looks nice, it really does. It really does.
The ones we built before, we didn't use pressure-treated lumber. We used just rough solid lumber. It didn't last like it should have. This here should last 15 years or longer.
Yeah, so aren't you glad I had something to say? I really thought that was interesting, and you know, I wouldn't have known except Katie found out, and then she came and showed.
I was starting to go down there and use it as a float and jump in.
Jump off.
It was really hot that day.
It was. Yeah.
How many baby clams do you think you might get in one cycle?
Well, we could put roughly, what we figured is probably 10 bushel or so in that flow. And depending on the size of the clam, we're probably going to use bigger clams. So every, I believe it's every inch or inch and a half clam will produce a million baby clams.
Wow.
So if they're, say we put.
The baby clam maker.
10 bushel of two-inch clams is roughly about, that's about 800 per bushel. So you're talking 8,000 clams produce.
Lot of clams.
Lot, lot.
So this, this takes the place of you guys going down and doing it yourself?
Well.
Well, not really. I mean, this, the, we used to have an upweller that was down there before by Sam Chapman had run. And for some reason, while that float was there, the outside edges of the channel in got, produced seed for some crazy reason. Since that's been gone, there hasn't been clams outside. So the theory is, we've, nobody's ever done this before. The theory is, is if we put another upweller out there, when they spawn, will the seed stay there? On the outside edges.
You'll find out in time.
Yep.
Good. Interesting.
How you doing, Max?
Stream is not working at all. I don't know why, it's just not providing any, like, video. I'm going to try and one more thing.
How are we going to do the minutes if we don't have any video or?
I have a separate recording.
We have the separate recording.
Okay. Sorry, I'm a little thick tonight.
It's okay.
It's this mask.
It happens. So, anybody else?
I have two things I wanted to talk about briefly. One is that there's an institute in Rochester called the Institute of Technology, and they've been doing some public surveys. They're called Civic Pulse. They've been doing some surveys of municipalities during COVID. And they published two of their results, two of the things they found out during the survey. One is that, and we've seen it, community compliance with COVID-19 measures will decline as it has been. And that kind of explains the increases in cases in certain areas of the country. And the other one is that local governments rely on encouragement rather than enforcing policies. And of course, that makes sense to try to police people's behavior. It's kind of hard to do. So those are the two things they're, they're reporting on. And the second one is that the, apparently the Maine Forestry Service has suspended online open burn.
Yes.
Permits until we get an adequate rainfall. I just thought I'd put that out there.
Yes, would you like it with pepperoni or a veggie? Curbside pickup, definitely. It's Ron, the auditor. I'm going to put you on speakerphone. Want to put him on here? Yeah. Can you hear us, Ron?
I hear you. Can you hear Karen and I?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Hi, folks.
I fixed the screen, by the way.
Oh, good, okay.
Welcome to Waldenborough.
Thanks for calling in.
Listen, thanks for having us. Sorry, sorry, I'm a little late, Julie. It was like construction, like nobody's business to get to where I'm at right now.
Oh, don't even worry about it.
Is the volume at max?
Do you want to put it further? Go ahead, we're waiting for you. Tell us how wonderful we are.
Julie, I'll walk through the highlights, walk through some of the talking points for last year, where we're at now. How about I do that?
Perfect.
So the state of the state, you know, the town of Waldenborough is on 19, for fiscal year 19, you were almost identically where you were at in fiscal year 18. You had about $1,003,000 in carryover balance in your general fund, you know, and 18, you had $1,003,000 in carryover balance in 19. And I actually think that that's good news, because you guys had planned to have a spend down of that in 19 of about $166,000, and you didn't use it all. So that's the best way I can say it, you know? And where we'd like to see that number, you, that 1.3, you guys used $255,000 to balance your 2020 budget. It left you with about $1.1 million of unassigned fund balance, which is almost exactly where you guys were in 18. So where do we like to see it? We like to see it between 30 and 90 days. And what's that mean in Waldenborough terms? It means 800,000 for 30 days, about 1.6 for 60 days, and about 2.4 for 90 days. Where are you at? You're at probably around 45 days, exactly where you were last year. So I think that that, that's good news, you know, for sure. As far as some of the other highlights, you know, for 6/30/19, the Water Department is lean and mean, you guys. I know we had this conversation last year. You got about $20,000 worth of carryover balance. All the rest of your money is tied up into infrastructure and, and I know, Julie, and help me, I know that there was discussion about rate increases, and I know that that was.
They come July 1st.
You know, et cetera. It's pretty obvious, Julie, you're at that point.
Yeah.
I know that there's even discussion, you know, about the whole complex of the Water Department, what was going to happen with that going forward as well.
We decided to keep it, and the rate increase starts July 1st.
There you go. And I think it's much needed, you all, you know, for sure, you know? And like I say, when you, as an outsider looking in, if somebody said, hey, Ron, you know, what's your, you know, what's your biggest take on that? You're running a utility department, a quarter of a million-dollar utility department, you know, you all, and it's lean and mean, you know, really, at the end of the day. So, so that rate increase was necessary certainly to, you know, to, you know, to help your financial picture, obviously for the Water Department, and certainly, I think, much needed, you all, for sure. Some other things, I think, and Julie, I don't know where you're at right now. Where are you at for your town meeting for 2000, FY 2021?
July 14th.
So a couple of things. This pandemic, all I've done, you all, you know, is have conversations with probably over 150 municipalities over the, over the past two months, just about kind of where their budget's going to land in June 30, 2020. And what we're seeing, you all, is not financial problems in this fiscal year on June 30. We're seeing financial problems, you know, somewhere late, late this year and, you know, the wintertime of December of 20, in the early part of 2021, you know? And I'm not going to say that Waldenborough is going to be spared here, you all. I could see you guys having some cash flow problems for sure, you know, with this pandemic and certainly the not knowing what's going to happen in this state, and it's in some tough shape too. You know, what's going on with revenue sharing and, you know, the tourism season? It really is impacting and taking no mercy all over the state, you know? And what I'll tell Waldenborough is the same thing that I'm telling all other municipalities. I think, Julie, it's going to be probably well into fiscal year 2021 before you know, you know, really, what the resemblance, you know, of what this whole pandemic is going to cause to the, you know, financial status of local government, you know, in this state, you know? And that's a tough way to run local government, you know? The good news is, is you've got, you know, you've got some fund balance, 45 days to, you know, to prepare for, you know, some cash flow or whatever, whatever the challenges are, you know, and running, you know, local government, you know? And I think you're going to need it, just like every other community in the state, you know, for sure. And I think that that's probably one of your bigger challenges as well. And I think that the good news is, is that you've been able to put some money away into capital reserves, you all, you know, and you got about $1.8 million there. I believe that money's there to use for cash flow purposes. We're seeing a lot of municipalities, you know, basically, you know, going, you know, to the public and saying, hey, if we're going to survive this, you know, we may have to access some of our dedicated reserve accounts for cash flow purposes. I see Waldenborough in the same boat as all the other communities, really, you know? At the end of the day, for June 30, 2021, the fiscal year next year. I think it's going to be a big challenge for this state and for all the local governments in it to really maintain that, you know, financial stability. And a time ago, $1 million would go you guys a long way. Not, not in this day and age. A million dollars could be a phone call, you know, for some, you know, necessary, you know, repair, infrastructure need, or whatever, you know, that, you know, that you have going on there, you know, that could pose a problem, Water Department included, you know, too. And that's really, you know, that, I think that that also puts a lot of pressure, you know, on, you know, on the municipality as well, when you got a lean and mean enterprise fund. And trust me, we're, we're seeing a lot of lean and mean, you know, enterprise funds.
We did do.
Go ahead, Julie.
We did do, we did cut $480,000 out of the budget this year.
Yeah, and I think that, like I say, that, that's cause and effect, Julie. I think that that's a good thing. Hopefully that'll mitigate some of the revenue shortfalls. I'm more so concerned, you all, with revenue sharing and any other special thing that's going to happen here, you know, if we experience a wave two of this pandemic.
Correct.
And this state certainly doesn't have the money, you know, going on. The education systems, you all, that you guys are direct contributor of, they're, they're, you know, I think that there's going to be some financial struggles there too in this state, you know, and how the cost of education and what the cost of education, you know, is going to look like in FY 2021. You know, we're in some challenging times and times this state, this state and this country's never seen. And I really think local government's going to bear the burden, you know, of a lot of the financial hardships, for sure. You know, and big brother federal government's going to come bail the states out, and the state's really going to have to, you know, really, quite frankly, pass that money down to you all, you know, and the communities to, I think, you know, keep, you keep the resemblance of this infrastructure in the state looking somewhat close to what it looks like now. So, yeah, it's, there's a lot of conversations going on out there, and I, I am, I'm struggling with June 30, 2021, you guys, you know, really, it's, there's going to be some huge financial challenges in this state. And Julie, everybody's cutting their budgets, and everybody's delaying infrastructure, you know, projects to protect their cash flow, you know? Everybody's doing the same thing, and I'm glad that you guys obviously looked at that and, you know, saw that as, you know, a, you know, a deterrent, you know, to help you out financially, so.
Ron, one of the things, one of our goals, I think, that we'd like to try to accomplish is to wean ourselves off of revenue sharing and not anticipate that in the budget ever again, and just look at it as, oh, look, a windfall.
There's a lot of people in that same boat, and this back conversation's been a common one too, you know? With the point, we're seeing people cut revenue sharing in half or entirely, you know, for their 21 budgets, Julie.
Yeah, well, yeah, I might fall in that, I might fall in that category, oops.
Yeah, Julie, I'll tell you, other ones are road assistance, you know, and any other type of homestead reimbursements, things like that, Julie, the equipment, you know, reimbursement, the Betty. I'll tell you, there's a lot of people looking hard at those things, because I think that some of those programs are going to have to get sacrificed, and I think the municipalities are trying to stay out in front and make sure that their budgets, you know, include possibly, you know, a reflection of that sacrifice.
Yep.
Yeah, you're not alone. Like I say, it's, it's tough, Tom, and I really think even July 14th, you guys moved it to July. I think that that's good. Would have done the same thing. I think it's going to be probably well into after Labor Day when you really see, you know, what, you know, what the stimulus package number three, four, and five is going to look like, because that's where your, you know, that's where, that's where your relief is going to come into government, you know, I think, you all, you know, really, at the end of the day, you know? And what the, what the states have now, what's been given by the US federal government, you know, is nothing more than kind of a stopgap, you know, to throw some emergency funding, you know, at where emergency funding needs to be thrown at in the states, so.
Well, thank you.
It's a tough, it's going to be a tough one, you know? And like I say, whatever you all have for questions, I look forward, you know, to be in your sounding board. There's a lot of conversations, you know, going on right now, but I think that the biggest thing that I'll say is, there's a lot we don't know, and there's a lot we're not going to know until well into your next fiscal year, so.
Ron, one of the other things we're looking at is restructuring any debt we have.
I think that's a great idea. And one other thing, Julie, you might want to think about too, you know, because interest rates are so attractive. I think the banks, Julie, everything that I'm seeing right now, especially some of your bigger banks in the state, the state of Maine, with government spending, with government spending and financing, I'm talking to two banks right now, Julie, they're apprehensive of lending big money for, 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 for infrastructure, leases, things like that, Julie. I'll tell you, they're sitting on the fence, you know, for a lot of reasons, but I think now is the time to be talking to the banks, because I think there's going to be a run on the banks, Julie, sometime this, you know, this fall, you know, with tax anticipation notes, which you may want to consider, you know, just in case there's an insurance policy out there, you know, if January, February, you find your cash flow getting real lean and mean, you know? So I encourage it, Julie, absolutely, and talking to your banks now sooner than later.
Right.
Is the way to go, so.
One of the area, can you hear me, Ron?
Yes.
You know, one of the areas of concern that we've had is the school budget.
Yeah.
I mean, our town forks out over $5 million a year for its school budget. And to the best of my knowledge, at least, the school board has not taken, the school board has not taken any action at this point to anticipate the kind of difficulties you've just described. They're assuming level state funding.
And everything that I've heard, and I'm just shocked that I'm hearing this right now, and I've got great respect for the Department of Education, but the Department of Education right now is going on record, let's, that's just changed you all in the past, we'll say 72 hours, you know? Going on record to saying that they're not anticipating any curtailments or any reduction, you know, of education subsidy. And I'll tell you, that's a big unknown, and that's a powerful statement, you know, for, you know, for that to make, because it has such tentacles, not only with education, but to all the municipalities of which you just said, $5 million, more than half of your budget is coming out for the cost of education.
Yep.
And that's a big wild card, you all, and that's a tough one, you know, to have to sit and try to wait, you know, well into your fiscal year before you can kind of see that, you know? And I really, you know, hope that the education's very, the Department of Education is very proactive and working with these schools so that they're working with you all, because I can see that being a budget breaker this year, so.
Okay.
And we do a lot of schools, and we're having those conversations right now. I think the schools are all shaking their heads too, so.
Anybody else? Well, I think that's it for you, Ron.
Yeah, listen, and listen, it's been great, and there's been a lot of progress made. And Julie, as we discussed, you know, I think your Trio software, you guys continue, you and Peg continue to work on that. I'd still continue to put a lot of energy into that, but there's a lot of progress going on in Waldenborough, and whatever we can do to help, you know, Julie, again, with Trio, and be that sounding board, and be that help and crutch for you and Peg, and, you know, and help out through these challenging times. We're here for you.
Well, COVID, COVID did one thing. It made Peg and I have a lot of alone time together to work on our debits and credits. And once you do pre-audit, Karen will get lots of little notes that.
We'll give you a quiz on that. We'll give you the COVID quiz.
You're going to give me, I had to put my CFO hat back on, and so there's lots of little notes that I left you that said Julie did this. If it's wrong, just let me know. Peg had nothing to do with it.
And we took care of that matter with Richard last year with EMS, you know?
Right.
The board's aware, and yeah, there's, there's a lot of progress going on in Waldenborough, really.
There really is. And, and I will tell you that that, with, with the write-off and then with how we're doing billing differently, it's working really well. The next Select Board meeting, you're going to see a couple of requests for some assistance for paying bills. And we've also started to ask other towns to submit their billing that might be outstanding to their fund for reimbursement for.
Yeah.
People who can't afford to pay. So we're really trying.
Listen, and that's one thing we can say, you all, you know, just let the board know that there's a lot of effort going into Waldenborough, really, you know, and just trying to progress, so.
Well, thank you.
Listen, good luck, stay safe, you all, and whatever you need us, Julie, we're always here, so, and we're looking forward to pre-audit.
We are too. We're excited to have you come. Thanks.
Debit's on the left, credit's on the right, don't forget.
I remember. Bye.
Talk to you all later.
Well, that was a good.
That was helpful.
That was helpful, and that was a good, and it was a good, you know, first year for Peg. Not that we don't have, you know, our Trio, we're still trying to navigate through, but we're, we're working on it.
Well, his report indicates that it's making progress.
And I'm very proud of our, our, our fund balance and how we've managed that. And, you know, I, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but, you know, I was talking to Steve, and I just want to, I should also mention that Steve, Nolan and I have our, every meeting night, we have our. night, we have our 3:30 phone call. We were on the phone for an hour today. He wanted to extend two things to you. One is that we have an amazing fire EMS department and police department who were amazing, apparently, during the graduation and just how everything moved and they kept the traffic flowing and everything, they just did a great job. We have, we are now up to, I think, a list of 13 things that we think we should, could share and save money doing. So that was exciting and he did reiterate again today that they're still getting the same guidance from the Department of Ed, as Ron just said, that don't anticipate any reduction in funding.
That's where I have a bone to pick with him. I don't think they ought to be waiting for guidance. I think they ought to be doing what we did, they ought to be proactive and they ought to get it done and they're not, so I have a real problem with that.
Well, what, they have different rules, they follow different rules.
That's not a rule that you have to wait for the guidance, you, you, or at least you, you construct your plan B and get it going.
So.
I wasn't finished, I'm sorry. No, they have, as far as I know, and I did speak to a school board member, their rules are different than ours. If we cut money and all of a sudden it comes in, we can spend it, is that correct? Do you need to?
We would have to go back and re-adopt.
Right, they, they are saying that, and they do have a plan B, the Mrs. Pike did explain that they do have, that their guidance was to keep the numbers because if they, if perchance they get the money, then they can spend it, but whatever they agree to, they cannot spend over that. So that was according to select board, a school board member. If they get the money, that's why they, that's why they, she thought the guidance was to keep the numbers, but they do have a plan B. If they don't get the amount, said amount, and I think they're not really planning on it, they do have a plan B, but if they cut, then they can't and the money does show up, they can't use it. So those were the different, different rules that they have.
The problem is that if the voters approve the budget that's on the ballot now, we are committing as voters to provide and fund a budget of $30 million. Unless we go to the polls again, we can't rescind that vote.
No, but they don't have to spend it all.
I'm not finished. I'm not finished. So the school board is putting the voters into the position of having to pass a budget if they pass it and then live with the consequences. My point is that we should turn that budget down. We're gonna have the guidance the governor says by August 1st. That gives them about four weeks, if you look to the middle of August, to come up with another budget based on the guidance that they received from the governor. If they're waiting for guidance, then they shouldn't have passed that budget to begin with, they should've let it ride because they could fund for three months based on last year's budget anyway, but they've gone ahead and done it. And my view is that because the budget always passes in Waldabro, almost without exception, I think I don't remember one time when the budget didn't pass, we met in the gym, but it usually passes. So my concern this year is that voters are really not gonna be taking as close a look at this as they need to and vote it down and require the school board to come together again, wait for the guidance they didn't have when they did the first budget and then make, and then take another at it, a crack at it, as you said, Julie, take another bite out of the apple.
So, so what I think, though, I think where everybody's getting confused, too, is if it does, so if it does go down, if it doesn't go down and it goes through as is and then you, they have, they find out after the fact that they're short $1 million in revenue, they, they still have to go back.
We don't, we're not approving the revenue side of that budget.
No, but.
The only thing we're approving is the taxes that we.
But they, but they need, but it needs to be a balanced budget, is what I'm saying, so they would have to make those, if they're down a million, they're gonna need that million, they're gonna need to prevent, present a balanced budget.
Well, I would rather vote it down and then let them start from scratch and know where we're all starting.
But, but I think that, my train of thought just left me, it was, oh, so my, my point was, when I started, was that we are 536,000, 536,000 below where we were in last year's budget.
I'm sorry, that's a strong man.
No, we, the town.
We are, oh, sorry, yes.
Okay, so the town, our, us, us, the town.
Yep.
We adopted a budget that was $536,000 less than last year and we made $480,000 in those cuts, as everybody knows, but, so I just want, I wanna talk about just like for us for a minute is we have, we've made those cuts, we didn't anticipate, I didn't play with, we didn't play with Betty and we didn't play with any other reimbursement.
Homestead.
In homestead, we didn't even play with that, we took the hit on revenue sharing, knowing that that's the big one, so we took, we, I think we cut it more than in half, so that's where we're at with that.
Yep. No, I think what we've done is.
No, I, I think, I, I just wanted to reiterate on what he said and, and like I said, they're still getting that same guidance and obviously from what Ron said, all the schools are, which was good to hear.
Yeah, well.
They're all getting same information.
Not all the schools have reacted the same way.
Well, that's up to the people, though.
Some of them anticipated by cutting their athletic program before the end of the year, which is what the state directed them to do, in fact. They, they, they requested that the school district, the same thing the state government did, is cancel whatever they can to ensure that revenues are banked and not spent. And our school district didn't do that.
They've cut their sports, they've cut a lot of the sports.
They didn't cut the salaries, Jan, the people were still paid. That's where the money is.
Well, they haven't, like, there's no soccer, I don't think they've paid.
I'm sorry, but.
I don't know, it is up to the people and I do remember years when the school budget did not pass, there were many years, for a while, it was very, it was a difficult time, I'm trying to remember the name, there was a mix somebody. And most recent years it has, just that one time. But prior to that, there was a, there was a spell when it was difficult. I think it's up to the people, you know, I think it's up to the people, it will go to the vote and it's up to them, we can't.
Well, I encourage them to, to, to make it go back and have, have another crack at it.
I would encourage them to vote what they think.
Fair enough.
You know, some will, some won't.
Any other, I guess, Julie, the ball is in your court now.
Oh, is it my turn? Um, lots of fun things are happening. Absentee ballots are just flying out of this office and I wanna give a big shout out to my sidekick over there, Max, who is just being amazing and we got our original 400 out all on, between last Monday and Tuesday and we're almost at 600, so.
Wow.
Here we go, we're going. So that's going well. If you do bring back your absentee ballot, please drop it off to the door, knock on the door, don't leave it in the box out front, there's three different signs that says that, so hopefully people will understand that. We are still having in-person voting, we're working on our plans for that, we're still getting guidance from the state about what they're expecting us to do. So that's going well. We are closed, just so you're aware, the 4th of July, with our different work schedule, we will be closed next Thursday. So just be aware of that, so we will be closed Thursday. Trying to think what other fun things, we are also, big news, today was our last day for the food pantry to be here at the office. We're, they're relocating down to 124 Friendship Street, the old Madomic, former Madomic House. So it was a good day where we were able to say goodbye to how we done, we have been doing it. Big thank you to Moose Crossing, they donated squash and tomatoes, we handed out today, plants, so people could take them home and plant, but that's where we're at. So next week, everything will be down there, we'll be helping, our volunteers will be helping one more time, but then they're gonna fly on their own again. It's like watching your child leave the nest.
They were very appreciative of everything they learned here and all of the contacts that you made, I get to listen in as they were at the table, the intake table.
Today, we had laundry detergent and paper plates.
Yep.
You just don't think about the things and, and a lot of it's based on what people have said they need and you don't realize, but like your SNAP benefits don't cover any paper products, any hygiene products, so those are things. We gave out razors two weeks ago.
Yep, and some today.
And some today and deodorant, it was a huge hit. It was a really huge hit, so.
And also tooth, uh, toothpaste.
Toothpaste and.
Toothbrushes, last.
Toothbrushes and, yeah, I think it's a really good, it's a really good.
The recipients are very, and they are so kind and they just wanna thank everybody. They're just very, it, it's a very pleasant experience.
It is.
Do we have numbers from today?
I do not have numbers from today.
Ninety something, I think, when I left, I think it was almost 100.
Ninety something.
Yeah, so we're hanging right there and the only other thing we have to address would be spraw block, because we do a delivery there, so we're trying to get that set so we no longer have to deliver, but the people who are in true need now that their cook is back and they're getting their meals to, to, to figure out what that real count is for that.
Yep, okay.
Julie, you said you, we were closed next Thursday, the 25th?
No, I'm sorry, the, it'll be July 2nd, I'm sorry.
Why, why, why?
Because July 4th is the holiday and it falls on a Saturday this year.
Okay, so we're closed Friday anyways.
Right, so that would be the holiday Thursday, I'm sorry, July 2nd.
Okay.
I keep, I'm, I'm a week ahead.
I'm a week behind.
I'm a week ahead. I just wanna get to July 14th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. Any other comments from anyone? Do you have anything, Max?
Did you have, we have to open up for public comment.
Yeah. Do you have anything, Max?
Um, I have nothing right now.
This, this is for public comments?
Yep, I'm not seeing anything on here. I'm gonna try and fix this maybe tomorrow, see what went wrong, but the stream's not working, but I haven't received any comments.
Okay, thank you.
Did you wanna open to public officially?
Well, I, I thought I did.
Okay.
If you, I can say it formally, that we're open for public comments, if people would like to participate in the active stream, please do so now.
Don't forget this is why.
I'm sorry.
Nothing. I mean, three people are watching, one's me, one's Ruben, one's probably Alex, so I don't think there's really any comments.
Okay, thank you. The consent calendar, is there a motion, please?
A motion to accept.
Second. Second, Jan, did you have something?
I, there's a thank you note, correspondence that goes with that, do you want me to read that?
Yes, please.
It says, "To the committee of the George Genthner Scholarship, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude for the generous scholarship you awarded me. I greatly appreciate your recognition of my efforts. I am pleased to say I will be attending the University of Maine at Augusta this fall. Once again, thank you so much, Hannah Prock," and she sent a picture with the big thank you on it.
Oh, wow, isn't that nice?
Isn't that cute?
Yeah.
She comes from, I think, a family of like.
No, it's too small.
I think there are like five kids at least, I think, in her family.
Wow.
But, yeah, it was very, I thought that was very nice of her to do that for us.
Anything else on the consent calendar to be discussed? Okay, all in favor? Four zero. New business. The Spirit of America Award, I don't wanna mention names here, but the thought was that...
It doesn't have to be from Waldabro.
No, I asked that.
Uh huh.
It has to be somebody who's done something amazing for Waldabro.
Yeah, so is there, is there a consensus that we should work on this?
We usually do, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We just wanted to make, I thought that was a really good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a good idea.
Not that it was mine, but it was. Good.
Okay, we've reviewed the 2019 audits, or 10.2 was taken care of, discussed the spectrum agreement with a side letter.
So this is the original agreement that we had before we added Chapel Road to it. So now we took Chapel Road out of it because they're not gonna sign it if Chapel Road's in it because they don't wanna adhere to the guideline in the throes of a pandemic. So they did give us an email that says they'll do Chapel Road.
They did. So.
So if you guys would like, if, if, if you are comfortable, um, proceeding with just an email, which is not part of the agreement, then we should execute this. And forward it on to.
Is this letter on the top from?
That's from.
Shelley.
Shelley to me.
Is she Spectrum?
Yes. So we already had the hearing on this, I'm looking at this not as a whole new agreement, but that we submitted them language, they submitted it back and said that they can't accept that language, so we would just have to execute this agreement because we've already had the hearing and everything. So that's, that's, and this is the recommendation from Ruben, the head of the CTC committee.
And he actually just commented, "If it comes up, I'm pro this plan for the franchise agreement." That was Ruben.
I'm pro, I'm pro this plan for.
The franchise agreement.
For the franchise agreement, thank you.
So if you would like to take a vote, we can execute it, I can get it up there tomorrow to them.
Okay.
And on.
The motion would be to execute on the understanding that we have an email from them confirming that they will do Chapel.
With the revised language, taking out Chapel Road in any timeline.
Right.
They are going to do Chapel Road.
That's what the email says. But they're not willing to put it in the agreement, which is why when I came back to you guys with this, I said, then we have no, but it's all, it's in an email. I know what you're saying.
It's almost tantamount to being a side letter without, and, and it's not enforceable, but I, I believe Shelley. I do.
So we just need a motion to approve the agreement.
So they can back out anytime they want.
Well, if they sign the agreement, they can't back out of the agreement.
I know, but it's a me, it's an email, um, legal.
It's probably not binding.
It's not binding.
Not binding.
This is a leap of faith, which is the closest maybe that we're gonna get to getting Chapel done.
So you think they will do it? They will do it this year?
They haven't said anything for a timeline?
They will not accept, they, they, they don't want a timeline put into the agreement, so the, I think the email's the best we're going to get.
They, they have indicated that they would apply for applicable permits no later than 30 days from the execution of the franchise agreement, so there is a timeline there.
Right.
Execute tomorrow, they have to apply to CMP for the permits within 30 days, they agreed.
That's what's in the email.
That's what's in the email.
Not in the contract.
Not in the agreement, but it's in the email.
But it does give the six months.
They're stating their intention and I.
My fear was that if we sign this agreement, we went from four, nine homes to 14 homes.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah.
And I was afraid that then it would never get done without something in writing, but we have the email, if we got, I, I, it can't.
We're no better off by signing than we are now, but.
Right, it's.
We're certainly not worse off.
It's a leap of faith.
Yeah.
I just hope they service these people.
I do, too.
There is nobody in this room who is. There is nobody in this room who is more eager for them to be serviced than Julie. I want them to get the service. I do. I desperately want it.
Okay.
So you gotta call the vote?
Yep. So the, the motion is that we authorize Julie to sign the agreement. And that we do have the email from Shelley confirming what Spectrum intends to do.
And I will sign it and send it off in the morning.
Yep. Is there a, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Four to half. Animal Control Services contract.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions? I know we went over this during the, um... Oh, sure. Budget Committee meetings.
Yep. Is this, is this the agreement that we've always signed with them?
Yes, it is.
It is? I, it does things like require us to share equipment, animal control equipment, which I don't think we have and probably aren't doing now.
It's, this goes to every single town. It's the same agreement.
Yeah, it's gonna be the same. They're not gonna make us any different from anybody else.
No.
And we do get the service.
Which we were very loud and clear heard that we cannot provide ourselves.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So is there a motion?
It's just to authorize me to sign.
To authorize Julie to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Four zero. We drew, review revenue and expenses summary year-to-date.
This was something that Peg sent out to you by?
In a package.
Well, she also sent it to you by email, I believe. We're working on it.
And this is dated as of the 11th of June, so it's already a couple of weeks old.
It is.
And you were 91% of your expenses, which means you're underspending.
We are underspending.
And you're 98, 97% of revenues, which is you're very close to pulling in the projected revenues that you expected to get.
Between Rose and I, we've been out there saying, "Register your vehicles, register your vehicles."
Yeah.
We're trying everything we can, believe me. We just want to get to 100. I can't over, I cannot overstate how hard we're trying. We really are. We have made it so easy now. You have online, you have curbside, you have appointments. We just have to get it done.
Yep.
I have to do my vehicle this month. I talked with Rose. She gave me the amount. All I have to do is go home, write a check, send all the information in, and she'll send me back the little stickers for my plate. Easy peasy.
Yep. Are you gonna mail it in, or are you gonna?
I'm gonna have to mail it back to me.
You're gonna mail it back?
Yeah, we have, we have, we have rapid renewal. We have Rose's rapid renewal. We have all kinds of things, so it's been good. But-
Uh, I gotta say, you guys are doing a great job under the circumstances. This is not an easy time.
It is not, and we, you know, we're trying. And I, I can't say this enough about the office staff. All the departments have done great, but specifically the office staff who bore the brunt of the cuts. They are still here. We are still working with smiles on our faces. I mean, there are nights that Peg and I and Rose are here till 6:30, quarter to 7:00, and you guys know, because I call some of you on my way home and say, "Hey!" You know? And, um, we're here. And again, we're only being, they're only being paid for 32. You know, and it's... We're doing less with more, uh, more with less. But there has been a lot of improvement with the use of IT. And I have an update for our website. Our training for Tanya, myself, maybe Max, and, um, Marcus, um, will be the second and third week of July.
Have they finished the site map yet?
Like, the, the site, the site, we have the ability to see the site.
Okay, great.
Um, but we haven't, we can't go in it and play with it yet, so, and we can't do that until it's the second... I'm sorry, it's the first week of July is the first week of training and then the third week, because we didn't want to do it on the 14th of July. So I'm hoping by August, we'll have everything up and so...
Cool.
And they've been, they, they, they really understood the, um, I, I think, what we were looking for, so. And as far as the appearance of it, so.
Well, there's light at the end of the tunnel.
There is light. I forgot to say that during my-
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Already to 10.6 is just to reappoint Scott Simpson to the planning board.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Four zero. And the 10.7 is to, uh, to discuss broadening the mandate of the A.D. Gray Subcommittee to include consideration and recommendation of additional proposals and issuance of an RFP if they want to recommend that to the Select Board.
This is for A.D. Gray?
Yes.
It's just for the Subcommittee to-
The Subcommittee. Right now, we can only talk about a contract to a specific person.
Okay.
But we want to expand that so that we can do other things.
Yep.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The pitch.
The pitch. Um, well, just, can I just talk about A.D. Gray for a minute? And, and one of the reasons is, is that we've received another, uh, proposal from Volunteers of America who are looking at the building. So, um, that's, that's kind of what the impetus behind this. So the pitch, um, they would like to have their yearly soccer camp here on our fields. Typically, they go to the school, but all the school fields are closed right now. So they can't be utilized. So they have asked, requested us to, um, allow them to use the fields.
What's the dates?
Specific fields? All fields? Some fields?
Um, the soccer fields. I think there's one.
They, the Dutch, they've, they've been here for years.
Yeah.
Summers, and they normally, uh, have their camp at Philbrook Field.
But they haven't in the last couple of years. So they're gonna do Philbrook and utilize another field over behind the school. Marcus is good with it, and it won't, it won't conflict with who we've already allowed to use the field.
That's, that was my question.
Yeah. What are the porta potties or aptio facilities?
Well, that's, we're going to charge them the cost of porta potties also.
Okay.
And that covers us on insurance, correct?
Uh, they already, they have their.
They have insurance.
Oh, they have it, yeah.
Yeah, if they don't, you, you said you couldn't get COVID insurance.
Um, how?
So you can.
Um, they have a waiver too, um, and they have increased their insurance. So apparently, they have people coming from all over to teach these kids, and it would be sad to not. And I figured you guys wouldn't be upset with it since you already allowed.
No, I-
And they'll adhere with all the-
Right.
The same rules that everybody's gonna be treated the same.
Yeah.
I am though requiring, and, and Marcus agreed with me, that every field request should come before you guys. And the insurance company would prefer that we do it that way.
Okay, good.
Were, was the town, did the town do the Dutch soccer before, or was it always an outfit?
It's always been the pitch.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. My, my grandchildren played, did that. I've, I've watched them.
Yeah, no, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's good.
It sounded like a good plan.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion, or are we okay with this consensus? I sense we have a consensus, but-
I still think you should probably make the-
We probably ought to make a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Okay.
Second.
Subject to insurance and so forth, yeah. And there's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Four zero. Thank you. All business, there is none. Agenda items for the next meeting.
I don't have anything.
Okay, well, we'll develop some as the-
It will be July.
Weeks go by here.
Yeah.
It will be July 14th.
It'll be July.
Oh, is it the 14th?
Yeah.
It is, isn't it? No. Is it?
It's, uh, July ele, July-
July 14th.
Yeah, it is July 14th.
It is July 14th.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be a short meeting.
Unless something really urgent comes up, because you're gonna be involved in counting absentee ballots, among other things.
No, we're gonna do that Monday. That's it.
You're gonna do that Monday?
Well, on Mon, we, we have reserved the rate and we have advertised that we will count ballots, what we have, on Monday. So they're already in the machines. And then, and we've done that for years here, so it's not, that's nothing new. We don't know the results. We just put them in.
Right.
Um, and that requires, um, poll workers from both parties, myself and the Maximillion Worth of Billion. Um, and we are still working on, um, the thought process that we might open up the fire, um, department. And what we might do is bring you in through the first aid, sign up everything, have the tent, voting tents essentially in the fire, um, base. And then have a no-mask voting room in the fire meeting room. So it might require us to have more poll workers, but it would make, if there is an issue where we have to clean, it would be, um, quicker for then us to shut down and have to clean and prevent everybody from being able to cast their votes in a timely manner. But we have to run that by the powers that be, so we will, we will run that by. And I just want to say, everybody who's received their absentee ballot, it's so long, they are so happy that they're getting to do it because there's so much people are voting on it. Actually, we think that we're gonna see more of this now that people have gotten a taste of it.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, what's great is some people aren't registered, but they're requesting a ballot because they've moved. So, you know, we get to call each person and talk to them, so we're meeting a lot of new residents that way. And, and, um, it's, it's been, it's been a really interesting, don't you think, Max, interesting experience?
Yes, very fun. And by the way, do you want to know how many ballots we have mailed out so far?
Yes.
456 as of today.
And-
That's, that's at least the number I had.
Hmm, I think it's a little more than that.
What's the typical turnout?
I'm counting what's in this binder right now. That's what I can-
But what you're missing is all the ones that have been returned.
Yep. That's what I'm missing.
That's what you're missing.
So who knows, maybe we've broken 500. I don't know.
Yeah, we're closer to six, I would think.
I don't know how many are in your office.
Quite a bit. So that's what's happening is, once you get them, you have to take the paper out of there and you staple it to the ballot. That way, it's, it's, there's a lot to it.
So what was the turnout in last year's election? Was it about 800?
It usually is between seven and nine.
Yeah.
That, right in that ballpark.
So you're approaching critical mass here.
Well, it was interesting because at first, it was only Democrats asking for the absentees. Now I've got the Republican wave. So I went from the, there was Democrat wave, now I have, I'm in the middle of a Republican wave, so. I just say, vote however you feel, but, you know, if you want to come in, but, or, or vote absentee. But it, I will tell you, it's, people are enjoying, I think, having the time and leisure to-
It's kind of nice to sit around the kitchen table and talk to your wife about what you're doing and how you're gonna do it and discuss. It's, it's nice. You can't do that in the voting booth, but you can do that at home.
A, and I think you might see that through that process, you're gonna have higher voter turnout, which isn't that what we always want. We always scream, "We need more people to vote."
Yeah.
Right.
You know, and, and it might, and I, like I said, again, and I, I will say this, here in Waldeboro, you know, when you call in or something, you know, Tanya is on the phone taking, she knows everybody who's calling, and I'm, I know who's calling, or, you know, we, we've been talking to people and it's been great. Max loves it.
Yeah. And people can still do an application to get an absentee ballot.
Yes.
Until?
They, up until eight o'clock. Well, 7:59.
On-
Election day.
On election day, so.
As long as we get those ballots in, by that time on July 14th, you can get an application to, till July 13th, July 14th.
Even if you came to vote in person and you couldn't wait, you could get an absentee ballot and you could cast that ballot. The only thing you can't do is after, you cannot change your party after June 29th.
And if you mail them in, you have to remember to stay 80 cents cost-
80 cents.
And to sign that, sign the back.
Yeah.
Read the directions. I put it all right there, and then-
Like that little pink slip.
That little pink or yellow slip.
Yeah, the pink slip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody liked that, that what, everybody who was called who said, "I really appreciated knowing how much it would cost to mail back."
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So it's been great.
Okay, so I guess as to the meeting we have on the 14th.
If we don't have anything really pressing, we might-
Let's have one meeting in July.
Yeah, at least.
If we have something we need to really do, then let's have a meeting on the 14th. Are we willing to let it ride like that until?
Do, do we have anything pressing for the 14th?
No, the only thing that you would really need to do is, is do your reappointments to boards and committees and, and that.
We usually have a meeting on voting day.
Yeah.
We do.
You normally do.
Yeah.
It's just normally, it's not me.
Yeah, right, you're normally not running them.
Well, and that's gonna be the issue, is I'm gonna have to be in that room, so you might just have to have it without me. It'd be fine.
Be an appointment, not that.
Wouldn't be as much fun.
Pressing.
Yeah. Yeah.
If that's all we have, I mean, that's not really pressing.
No, they, they serve until a, a reappointment is made, so.
Well, technically, everybody's extended to June, July 14th, uh, July 14th.
So do we have, have we filled? Do we have Scott that we filled?
He's done.
He's done.
Well, that's a really, like, I would say that planning board position is the most important one.
That's an important position, it is.
Yes. And if there's anyone out there who's listening, who wants to be part of the planning board, please join.
How many vacant spots are out there?
There's, uh, one vacant spot, but, um, it would be good to have, I would love to always have an alternative, even if it's just one person. Just because there are some planning board members who, it's kind of like what we had a few years ago with Laura and Tara, where they unexpectedly had to leave. And then we were kind of down a few people. I don't really like being in that situation.
Do, have we filled? Have, have, uh, who's doing the, uh, interviews this year?
Oh, we have to pick those people. That would be good.
That's what we do.
We can do that right now. Why don't we just, oh, or-
Well, we have, we do that the first meeting after-
We should do it with the new board.
When, with the new board.
I agree.
Um, but have, who's doing them right now? Who's been doing that?
Katie and I.
Katie and Bob.
And have, have you had many people to interview and to fill positions?
No.
Mm-mm.
Uh, but we did have some people who were interested in conservation, uh, Saturday.
I sent them out. Okay, because I sent out ones that I had, that had expressed interest on Facebook to them, to their homes.
Good.
Okay, there were some that were talking to us, uh-
Okay. If you give me their names, I can send them an application. So now that's what I do. I don't wait for people to do it. We just send them an application.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
In the mail. That way they-
Yep.
Have no choice.
And of course, we need write-ins for the Budget Committee too. I mean, there are three-
Budget Committee, Water Depart, Water Department.
Utility District.
I mean, sewer utility, I mean.
Utility District.
Sewer utility.
So. Yeah, but we don't know any of those until after.
No, we won't.
No, but you, just be aware, you have to write them in.
Yep. Are there any other things we need to talk about tonight?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Uh-oh, dead pen. Here's a new pen.